Order. And we'll call roll please.
Commissioner Abbott. Not present? Commissioner Harvey, present. Commissioner Rivera.
Here.
Vice Chair Mendoza.
Present.
Chairman Hammerness.
Present.
Let the record reflect Commissioner Abbott is now present.
All staff repudge beliefs please. One begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let the uh, record reflect that Commissioner Abbott has arrived. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No Chairman there or not.
Alright. On to section B, public appearances. It's like we have a lot of public tonight. But I gotta read it anyway. B1, matters appearing on the agenda, if you wish to address the planning commission concerning any item within the commissioner's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chairperson. And at that time state your name and address for the record. The chairperson reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the commission in writing. Is there anybody here that wishes to address the commission on items not on the agenda? Take that as a no. Uh, B2. Matters appearing on the agenda, if you wish to address the planning commission concerning any items within the commission's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chairperson. And at that time state your name and address for the record. The chairperson reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the chair, to the commission in writing. Is there anybody here that wishes to address the commission tonight on the item agenda? I guess not. Moving on. Consent calendar, C1. Approved planning commission meetings, minutes for December twenty second, twenty twenty one and March second, twenty twenty two. I believe we might have some issues with these.
Mr. Chairperson, if I may, um, I've received uh, permission from staff that I, I'm willing to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as, I wouldn't say as presented, based uh, with minor changes for gr- with grammar and does not change the substance, I'm willing to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'm sure that didn't make sense, it didn't come out.
For a second.
Second that.
Okay, I'm an open discussion, just because I wanna ask a question. So do we need to s- can she submit those changes or recommendations after the fact? Since it doesn't affect the uh, substance of the.
Correct.
No one else caught it, then she needs to let you know what they are.
Yes, I believe that was, yes, prior to the meeting, uh, that is what was established since it is not anything to the subject matter contained within the minutes or the motions, and it's uh, strictly to grammar. Uh, then it, we can go ahead and move forward and we'll make those adjustments um, as part of the official record of the minute order.
Other discussion on the item before I close discussion. Discussion's closed. Take the vote. Is that what I should say, you may place your vote? Excuse me.
Chairman Hammerness and Commissioner Rivera, your votes are not yet recorded, if you could just try that again, please.
Ah, okay.
Motion passes five zero.
Guess somebody else must have voted when I saw the number change when I pushed mine. Okay, moving on to uh, item D, planning commission old business. Uh, D1, open public hearing, discussion action of amendment to ordinance seven ninety five relating to cannabis, relating to cannabis in the city of Imperial. Staff report.
Uh, yes, uh, Chairman and Commissioners, uh, before you, uh, just as a quick bit of history, we did uh, hold a public hearing on March ninth. Um, to discuss a resolution to recommend the uh, city council approve ordinance eight fifteen. It was during that time, there was a motion made to continue the public hearing uh, to March twenty third. Um, just a bit of background, uh, there were concerns voiced uh, by yourselves that we believe that we can, we can address here. Uh, some of those concerns did include the permitted zoning uh, within the existing ordinance as recommended, as well as where the uh, potential second permit, if recommended to the council would be placed and what that zoning is. Um, there was not any other direction or action, I would say, taken by the body and we will proceed.
And just as a, as an issue to that, this is a public hearing, I note that Commissioner Harvey uh, was not present at the last meeting. Uh, but based on the fact that we are basically starting over on this hearing with a, a new presentation of a draft ordinance, as well as the fact that this is a recommendation to the city council. Um, it is my opinion that she can fully participate and vote tonight.
So with that, just to um, for Commissioner Harvey's benefit to give a quick history. Uh, in twenty eighteen, the city council did adopt ordinance seven nine five uh, to allow for the uh, cannabis, medical cannabis use within the city of Imperial. It was amended in twenty twenty, um, those ordinances that did amend those of eight oh seven and eight oh eight to expand to adult use. Um, only one all exclusive inclusive permit is permitted within the city of Imperial that is currently held by March and Ash. Um, what we are looking for here, um, at the direction of the city council is to bring forward the potential for expanding um, to a second permit, however, that second permit would only be allowed for cultivation, manufacturing and extraction, it would not be for a dispensary storefront, any of the other uh, seven identified uses as approved by the Bureau of Cannabis Control. Um, to highlight some of the issues that were brought forward by Vice Chair Mendoza, um, and other members of the commission. The concerns um, that we believe that we can address, um, and, and we can discuss further. Um, we do recommend expanding from C2 to include I2. Uh, that would be for industrial uh, rail served, um, you do have a zoning map in front of you, that would be the light purple, if you will. Uh, that would, in essence, allow for the setback of the potential location to be away from the major arterial roadways within the city. Um, those are defined in our general plan and our community development director can go into a bit more um, detail with those, but they are defined in our general plan as um, obviously SR eighty six. Uh, Ayton, La Bruxerie, Neckle, Barione. Those are, those are the areas that are identified as those major um, thoroughfares within the city of Imperial. Um, so, and then in addition to that, we would recommend very strict design standards as to um, what the facade would, would look like or, or be allowed to look like, um, as far as any identifiers that, that could be uh, potentially put up as part of the business within those areas. And I will stand for any questions and, and leave it to y'all if I can. And then just a quick, just as, make sure that we speak into the mic, so, so that way those tuning in um, can hear us.
Anybody tuning in?
There are.
So the reason we didn't include um, I1 is because it's on the eighty's portion, there's a portion of I1 that's on the eighty sixth corridor. On the east side, cause the west side's the airport, obviously it's not gonna be there, so. My thought was the industrial park on Ayton, cause there's a lot of ground over there with open space still, and it's an industrial park that seems like a good place for something like that.
The industrial park on Ayton is within proximity to the sensitive zone radius. So that is why we did not include we can for potential zoning in the future. Um, to allow for all industrial, either rail-served or otherwise. Um, but currently, a, a large portion of the um, general industrial or I1 um, is county property, shared county property within the city of Imperial. Um, so those areas, uh, such as the industrial zone you mentioned are within close proximity to um, our um, certain of our apartment developments, as well as the uh, Sandalwood and Joshua Tree housing in that area specifically.
Maybe I missed it, what's the proximity circle? Cause I'm guessing there's a circle from the point out, thousand feet, quarter mile.
Has to be at, within the thousand feet.
And with this ordinance, how far away from our major thoroughfares does it have to be?
That would be, um, if you would like to include that specific distance in your recommendation to the, to the council for consideration, we can do that. Um, we don't have that specific stipulation as to an approximate of, of square foot radius. Um, that's, we were, we were looking to achieve that by adding additional zoning, but we can most certainly include that in a recommendation.
I'm just wanting to have, know, what in here is gonna keep it off of the major thoroughfare? What language is it that's going to exclude it from being along highway eighty six?
So the um, a- and the, there's two parts to this, uh, if, if you look at the proposed resolution, section one actually gives specific ordinance language, but because of the nature of finding out and, and, and finding out what the commission would like to see. Section two has broader uh, language that will then ultimately, if approved, be put into the ordinance. So section two A, um, says that business subject to the additional permit shall not be located on a major arterial as identified in the circulation element, those are the, the, the streets that were previously read, so that's the language, it's not located on um, the arterial, but if we want within a thousand feet of that, that can be added as well.
I, I maybe a thousand feet is a little extreme, but my concern is playing devil's advocate, if I were wanting this permit, I could say, okay, my address is on Marshall, it's not on a major thoroughfare. It's right up against it and basically on the major thoroughfare, but my address is not highway eighty six, so I'm not on highway eighty six. How do we prevent someone from saying, locating right across the street from March and Ash, right there where we don't want it? But because they don't have a highway eighty six address, they can say, I'm not on highway eighty six.
And certainly adding the language you suggest is um, more helpful to, to achieving that goal.
I just I know how people could try and find ways around rules.
Like we're on a slippery slope. And why I say that is because we have March and Ash that started out with just selling marijuana. Then they came in and got a permit, a modification, maybe a conditional use permit, I remember the meeting, so that they could cultivate and extract. Now we're having one that's just gonna be for cultivate and extract. And Chairman Mark brought up the last time, what's to say they don't come back and ask for a modification to their permit that they can sell? And then, we have another time, we're gonna have a third permit. So, even if we hide this, how many other cities in this valley have a March and Ash?
To, to my knowledge, there are two other municipalities and then one with the county of Imperial that do allow cannabis business of sorts within, within the city. That's not limited to the delivery services that are ministerially regulated by the state of California and allowed to operate throughout the county without having a permanent place within any municipality.
Other two municipalities, they have a stationary similar to March and Ash? I need to get informed.
Sure, Bobby, I, my understanding is that the city of Alcentro has the ability for up to two permits similar to March and Ash. It's my understanding, they have not yet, they're in the process of issuing those permits. Uh, but for other reasons, they, they haven't been built out yet. It's my understanding that Callexico also has a similar situation. I, I do not know the status of that. The county also uh, permits that, and I believe out um, on one eleven near Heber or some locations, there may be more.
Oh, I'm not gonna compare to the county. I remember when there was a, a, a fellow who came before the county board of directors, probably a couple years ago. And he wanted to put in a retail. I don't know about growing, but it was right there when you get into Sealy. And the, unfortunately, at least the people in Sealy and in the country, including myself, showed up and said, that we don't think that's really a good place to have it. But back to my point of slippery slope. I personally do not support the concept of having, having a town that is encouraging more marijuana facilities in addition to the two alcohol facilities, cause that was a counterpoint brought up two weeks ago. Well, there's Budweiser and Coors over there, and they've been around and they're dispensing alcohol to the general public, why are we opposed to marijuana? I don't support either, okay? And my main concern is, this is just the door that opens up and it continues and it continues and it doesn't matter how far you hide it. It's still gonna be, because like um, Chair, uh, Commissioner Mendoza stated, that's a pretty good one with respect to being on Marshall versus on highway eighty six. How, how many, how many exceptions are gonna be included so you get it down to what you don't want them on? And this has C2 in it, C2's on the main drag where March and Ash is located, I believe. And I2 goes all the way up along highway, highway eighty six. Past Houston, Worthington, it's up there at Short Road, okay? So it's still on the main drag. Those are the, just the two zones where we can have this type of engagement.
That is, um, as far as the, the two zones that are recommended, uh, before you, the C2 is established, that is current with our ordinance as it stands now. The I2 was um, what we felt in review of our current zoning would be the most applicable to achieve the goals um, that were discussed at our previous public hearing.
Therefore, under the C2, we could have one right next to March and Ash, getting the setting sun on highway eighty six.
Correct.
Why can't we say they can't be in C2?
We could create an ordinance that separated uh, the zoning for the, the initial all incomp- all-inclusive permit and this one. Um, in looking at it, I, I think the reason staff uh, was less concerned is with the additional restrictions, for example, the, the not placement, not on a major arterial w- would help eliminate areas within C2, and, and I think that was the focus. But um, you could eliminate C2 um, as a recommendation and just have I2. But that'll just be more extensive ordinance revisions, but it can be done.
We wouldn't be looking at a potential lawsuit issue down the road over somebody who wants to put in a distributor location in C2 and say, well, March and Ash has a top-notch place, then you changed everything and now I gotta sell my stuff out by the railroad tracks out on uh, off of Houston Road. They might not feel that as a, a fair advantage. Would that be a potential?
Like grandfathering though?
But uh, there's always the chance of a lawsuit in.
Well, I mean, one of the chances of us winning, I guess is the better.
But, but I also think, when, when you look at the, the different activity, it's not the same activity, one is uh, commercial. Uh, when it's retail, that makes sense in commercial, when you have cultivation and manufacture. I can see that being an industrial use and then a good justification to separate the two.
Well, my only concern, concern from the aspect of liability is that if we we can't move March and Ash, I mean, they got in there, they're there and, and it was kind of a learning curve with them, like anything else is like, yeah, we got them in and now suddenly, man, maybe that's the best place, but we don't know how much we can do about it. But if we say, okay, no more along the C2, we just exclude C2 altogether. And then somebody else comes back later and go, why can't I, you know, I'm gonna, I'm growing it out here, but I wanna have a dis- I wanna be able to sell it someplace where people can see it, just like these guys.
C2 for March and Ash for that permit will stay. Uh, we, we.
Yeah, we can't do anything about that.
But for a new one, then, and what's on the, for discussion today is, is not retail, it's solely the cultivation and um, manufacture. Uh, you, you are within your rights to recommend the, the zoning, the restriction on that permit is for I2 only.
I understand that, but if we make these zoning recommendations, potentially it can affect C2 down the road.
But I don't think it'll be affected the way that uh, Mr. Holbrook's recommending it, because we have two different types of permit, if we have the dispensary permit that's allowed in C2 and the manufacturing permit that's only allowed in I2. If, if for some reason somewhere down the road, future um, councils or county commission were to say, okay, we're gonna offer a third permit, which is a second dispensary, the, the zoning would still say they could be in that C2. It's only the manufacturing kind that can't be in there. The manufacturing.
I get that, I'm, I'm kinda devil's advocating a little bit.
But I bet you, a, a third person coming in wants, wanting to dispense, the ordinance would still say they could be there. Am I, am I correct, Mr. Holbrook?
Yes.
You'd have to first go and have it uh, passed by the council to allow the city manager to issue a third permit, is that correct?
That's correct. And, and to be clear, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, the um, the initial permit which uh, the or- the initial ordinance allowed for all seven uses, the original CUP was not permitted for all seven. And that's the reason March and Ash had come back to the planning commission to expand that permit, to, to utilize all aspects permitted under the ordinance. With this one, with only two areas allowed under the ordinance, if they wish to expand their CUP to include more activities, that would have to go through an ordinance change and back to the city council before that could be done. And then a third permit would also require city council action as well.
Well, that's not to say that whatever we do here, the city council could say, no, we don't like that, we're gonna go back the way it was, and that's the end of it. Yeah. We can still be overruled.
Okay, but we have a voice.
Oh yeah, no, 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 I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm just saying that, I'm just saying that uh, we're not the end of the line. But I am noticing in the, the resolution, as I see it written, I don't see anything in here specifically addressing zones.
I will say from this sta- from, from the, from a business standpoint, uh, any business is, I mean, if we're, we're gonna try to, to, to make this the, the long way around. A- any business owner wants to be uh, on a thoroughfare, they want their business to be seen. So as long as we continue to push them out, well, nobody's really gonna apply for it, because we've put them so far behind, three dumpsters on a back alley somewhere. Uh, that's, that's the truth, that's just from a business standpoint. Um, and I, I'm not sure if this is really about a location or not, I mean, uh, if we were gonna continue to drag this out, then we should have gone ahead and killed this uh, at the last meeting. Um, uh, from my standpoint, I don't, I don't uh, I don't use this stuff. But uh, uh, I'm here to represent the community, if the community doesn't want this, they'll come out and say it. Just like if I don't drink alcohol, well, you know what, doesn't mean that I'm gonna go ahead and shut down every brewery.
Chairman Hammerness, if I could draw you to section two B, um, that is where we did uh, put in both I2 and, and C2 to include the current. Um, but again, if, if the commission would like to adjust that for recommendation.
Okay, I'm looking at ordinance seven ninety five, right? I just wanna know what page I need to go to.
Hey, yes, page two, uh, right behind the staff report is the resolution for, for your consideration and either adoption or rejection this evening.
Wrong way?
Yeah.
There it is. There we go. Page is.
We just wanted to make sure you had all the information.
He did. Like yellow highlights on the stuff. Um, okay, this isn't the one that we would actually pass, okay?
Was being put forward.
Well, the way it's written, yeah.
And I wanna be clear about um, a, a few of these items. The um, the, the language in section one is proposed language. And I think if you do recommend this, that language is, is set, that would go to the city council. The uh, section two has other restrictive language that um, because the commission was still considering what type of restrictions. These are ideas, recommendations based on the last meeting. Whatever comes out in those, if there's edits, uh, additions for a, a distance requirement in A or deletion of a zoning in B, we will take those. Put them in an, in, in the ordinance language to effectuate what you want, and that's what will appear uh, and be brought to the city council. So it will look slightly different, but this is what is, will be the recommendations from, from the commission, if it's approved or amended and approved.
On section two A, it talks about it, uh, the, the permit, the additional permission now be, shall not be located on a major arterial. If we were to include the, the verbiage that it cannot be located on or adjacent to an arterial, um, a major arterial, is adjacent a vague definition to where maybe we should put a distance, or is adjacent gonna keep the businesses off the thoroughfares?
Give us enough leverage to keep them off.
I, I would say that if you're um, wanting to be very specific in your recommendation and do, and do what you can, that the more specific, the better, adjacent can be interpreted many ways, um, just to, just to be candid. Um, so if your objective is to make sure that they're within a certain proximity, whether that be from a thousand to five hundred square feet or six hundred square feet, whatever that may be, I would, I would recommend the more specifics.
I'm gonna look to, to the phone or staff to, to say, how far is, I mean, I'm not good at measurements and stuff, how far is it going to, do, should we be recommending it to get it away from those businesses, I don't wanna, if we're gonna proceed with allowing this I2 zoning for us to put a thousand feet on there, we're basically getting rid of the I2 zone anyway, because nothing is uh, more than a thousand feet away from it. So what is a good distance that it's gonna keep it off of the major thoroughfare, but it's still gonna leave it within the I2 zone?
Eighty six to the center of Marshall, I would estimate at about a hundred and fifty feet. That's about, looks like about three hose lengths to me. That's how I measure things, fifty foot lengths.
Just, just so I'm, I'm understanding, uh, Ms. Mendoza, is it, would you say, all other things being equal, that uh, you would not want this use on the west side of Marshall? And if that's the case, I think as written, it's, uh, if you're on the west side of Marshall, you're on a major arterial, meaning highway eighty six. So if, if, if you're, are you intending that it couldn't be on the east side of Marshall as well?
No, I think, in my opinion, it's, to get it on the east side of Marshall, you're no longer on the thoroughfare, there's, there could be construction or whatever in the future that it's not right there on the thoroughfare, like I said, I don't wanna make this so restrictive that we're even booting them out of the I2 by making the, the, the distance so big. But I don't, I wanna give it enough distance that it's not up next to the thoroughfare. And I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm gonna look to staff to say, I don't know how far, here, you know, how far is?
I'm rough guessing, but I mean, that's, looks like about three sections of hose to me. I'm rough guessing, but I mean, that's looks like about three sections of hose to me.
I mean, cause if we are, if we're including the C two, we are including that area right there, and I wanna make sure that whatever recommendation, if if I were to give a recommendation, it's not up near the roadway, we need, if we're gonna have to put a distance, we need to get it away from the roadway. But I'm not a good judge of distance, so how far would that be?
Well, what I mean, distance from what to what, give me, I I don't.
Well.
Cause I gave you my estimate from eighty six to Marshall. Hundred and fifty feet.
When I read this on a shall not be located on a major arterial, you're making mention of if it's located on on Marshall, then that doesn't make it located, right, or am I? But I would think it does, the address isn't the issue, I think if the building is not located on the major arterial. But I see what you're saying.
But I like I say, Marshall can come in and say, my address is so and so Marshall Avenue, I'm not on Highway eighty six, I'm on Marshall.
Right, so it's west of Marshall considered, could be enough to be considered a major thoroughfare.
I I would say if you're on the same side of Marshall as March and Ash, you're on an arterial. What whatever your address is.
I would too, but if someone were to come fight this, would they be able to make the case that and and beat it, that I'm not on Highway eighty six?
Speak a thousand. Even the back of the building is on eighty six, I would say you're on an arterial. And before they they get there, they're gonna, there's gonna be this process. And so if somebody proposes that, we're gonna find out very early if that's their uh approach. Because they're gonna say, well, this is where we're proposing it, and and we would say, you're on a major arterial. And so, I mean, Mr. Hammer just men- mentions litigation, I think as a general proposition, we we have very broad authority to define what's allowed, and you raise a good point. Why go through this exercise if at the end of the day, there's really no place they can go? The only other thing I would say, one one difference is that my observation in terms of looking at what other, what grow and manufacturing operations look like, at least in other jurisdictions, they don't look like March and Ash, it is more of an industrial kind of use. And for the most part, I think their preference would be to kind of fly under the radar, I don't think they want a world to know we're growing cannabis uh at this location. So uh I I think there is that aspect to it as well. They may not want to be in a re- really visible location. Because I think the nature of the building they wanna put up isn't, they you know, they're not wanting a Nordstrom's to grow cannabis.
And uh you're, they're not wanting it, but as a city, I think we're, if anything's built along there, we are wanting the Nordstrom's cause we're trying to go through all this in, you know, improvements along Highway eighty six, make it more friendly and make it a nicer area. And if you're allowing an industrial building to be built right there, to me, it's, we, I would want the Nordstrom's.
It's defeating a purpose if you just put a building.
Yeah, you want you want, I mean, they, again, I would want a nice looking building, they may not want a nice looking building, but it's
So just kinda out away from it a little bit, but so with the slowing down of the traffic on eighty six, was there consideration and thought to putting turnout so people could actually go from eighty six to the businesses on the west side of Marshall? With the slowing down of the highway and that, was that something that was been considered?
So the the conceptual design, um and again, just conceptual, but there is actually to be a signal light at Airport Road um in addition to the the Aitken signal light that would be taking place on eighty six, as far as in that immediate area. Um so as far as turnouts to create additional right in, right out, no.
No other driveways to those businesses though, cause I've noticed some crossovers to the ditch and stuff were put in, would kind of look like maybe that was something they were thinking of doing or?
No, those uh crossovers are specific for our uh public services to be able to access um for utilities in that area. So to support um the backdoor trucks and whatnot, that would need to have access to that specific, that's that's why those are there.
They're there for us.
Yes.
Okay. Well, we made a pretty sticky wicket here.
Yes.
Uh yeah, yeah, we're actually still in the public hearing. I guess they should have closed it, cause all the public that was here to be offended if I didn't.
Can I put any words in it with respect to signage? Uh Commissioner Rivera talked about, if I have a business, I want people to know where I'm at, if this is growing it and and extracting, why do they wanna know the public, why do they need the public to know where they're at since they can't sell it to the public?
Commissioner Body, we are recommending design standards uh that would be in consideration of that ordinance, that would be a part of the permit that would actually remove any type of uh signage, such as what you see for for March and Ash to be a storefront dispensary. Um so we would not be recommending that this second permit um be allowed to have such um displays.
Okay, but there's no words here.
Oh, that would be in the C U P if somebody actually was given a permit, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. So but back to the point, they don't need to advertise that they're there for the public, cause they can't sell to the public, right?
Correct. This is strictly strictly for cultivation and manufacturing.
Yeah, so they could be behind a dumpster, even three of them.
Um so uh Vice Chairman Doz, it it took us a minute, but we were able to pull up our our systems to to do those, so um the the long and short of it is if you if you wish to accomplish that parameter, it would be six hundred square feet. Um or you could also remove C two from the from the second permit language, and that would also accomplish that. That's the amount of square footage it would take to move into the I two as you see there off of Marshall, would be would be six hundred square feet there. So again, just to reiterate, even the rec- the recommendation of either moving C two and containing the um second permit solely to I two, or if you were to put that condition of leaving C two in, you could add the six hundred square feet verbiage in there, and that would accomplish the same.
Now, in an attempt to help staff, is is it less cumbersome to leave the C two in, that way we don't mess with the other permit and just put a distance requirement on it?
I think it is less cumbersome to do that uh leave the C two in and do the uh distance requirement.
Are we gonna get in trouble here if I don't close public hearing? And then reopen it for, or we, I think that bus has long since left the terminal.
Uh I I do have a recorded time of six thirty five as to when the the public hearing was opened, so.
In staff report.
Yes.
And there was no public hearing, so we went right to uh our stuff. Pretty much.
I I I think um you have the the public hearing opened at eight thirty five, which include the staff report, and then you had no public comment, so I would recommend that you formally close the public hearing at this point and then.
Formally close public hearing. Back to what we were doing. All right, is there anything else that we have we? Think we're all know where we're at on this? Commissioner Body?
So we're gonna add add the six hundred square feet from Highway eighty six, not just eighty six, any major, any major. But the six hundred feet will cover with respect to C two. Because C two's the one that's included.
And I two.
Correct, and I two's the purple, the light purple lavender.
Just to clarify, the C two, um the six hundred would put it um on the other side of Marshall.
All right, have we figured out how we're gonna modify the uh? Whoever's gonna make the motion needs to figure out how to modify it so we can get it done.
It would be a uh depending on if if it would be, it would be a uh modification of section two B of the resolution to include a six hundred square foot.
All right.
B B um two B or I was thinking two A could be modified directly. The business subject to the additional permit shall not be located within six hundred square feet of a major arterial and so forth.
Section, yes, two A.
Okay, I'm gonna call for the question. Yep.
Ready for this? I will make a motion that we approve resolution number P C twenty twenty two dash O three with the change to section two A to include language that any, the additional permit should not be located within six hundred feet of a major arterial.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Take the vote?
Motion passes three to two.
All right. So section D is closed, we're done with that, all right. Onto E, reports, commissioner reports. Commissioner Body? Have any reports or anything you'd like to talk about that's not about marijuana?
Nope.
Mr. Rivera?
No, not anything pressing, I just look forward to the uh Imperials autism um event coming up here the first weekend of April. Forgot what month I mean, uh first week of April, um definitely representing uh autism on Imperial's behalf. And um obviously the next um what is the what the title of our?
Color Fest.
Our Color Fest on the third week of uh April, looking forward to that.
Were we supposed to get something on that? Because I got a thing that said Color Fest, and there was nothing attached to it.
You got a calendar invite to remind you what time it starts and and where to be. So, yes, there'll be, there'll be much more information coming out on that, but we wanna make sure that we mark your calendars for those.
Tried to get that as a maybe, but I wouldn't take maybe.
Nope.
Commissioner Harvey?
Nothing at this time.
Vice Chairman Doz?
Nothing, thank you.
All right, we'll have a couple of things, small things. And I'm not even sure if it falls in the dust, I'm just gonna bring it up. I think we're maybe starting to have a little trouble with our homeless again. Because I've noticed a bunch of times over in our park that all the trash can lids keep getting thrown off and on the ground, and then the trash is getting blown out. And I'm pretty sure it's aluminum can seekers or something, and it's not been just once, it's been multiple times now, I've been over here and it's so I don't know what we can do or who needs to look at that or.
I know the parks are being used a lot right now because of baseball and T-ball, there's a lot of.
Well, I don't think the park over here, anybody's playing T-ball or baseball.
Which park exactly?
Papa Edgar in particular. Yeah, the metal lids that are on it, they just throw the lids off, then they root around in them, and then they move on to the next, I mean, they're all off, it's not like one, it's like, they're all off. A bunch of crashed spaceships out there. And I noticed the old Pentagonal is now some kind of a fitness gym. How did we miss that? How did that not go through us, or did we? So it's just, I guess it's sometimes the stuff comes to us, and I'm like, why are we getting it, and other things we never see, so.
Permitted by right.
And then the brewery, we went all that pain and suffering to uh get them cleared up as now a um yoga place with a barbecue on the weekends. That's not exactly what we started out with, is it? But it's still within the permit.
Yes, it is.
All right. All right, I'm done, staff reports, please entertain us, staff.
Should uh, I don't normally have a report, but um I wanted to introduce Katie Turner, who will be the new city attorney for Imperial, and you'll be seeing her quite a bit, she's extremely experienced, and I look forward to working with her through the transition.
Very much look forward to working with you, planning commission is one of my favorite parts of the job, so it's impressive to to see such an advanced city with so much dedication from the commission and the council to development, and it's something that I've I've specialized in and been interested in for years, and um I'm I'm a published author on zoning and planning and a nationwide one, so I do love it, um I get excited about the maps and the discussion, so I look forward to working with all of you, it's an honor to to have this opportunity and with Alexis, Dennis and all.
You might be disappointed with this crowd, but you know. At least with me, anyway, trust me. Anybody other staff? I have nothing to add tonight.
Just very quickly, we we all uh uh are sor- sorry to see Jeff go, but we're, we feel very fortunate to have Katie on board. Uh and if you if you look at her bio, land use is a particular interest of hers, she's uh been published uh on the subject of land use, and so uh very knowledgeable.
But we're looking forward to having her work with us, and sorry to see uh Jeff leave.
I'll be on the phone with him all the time, don't worry. We're, we've worked together for years, so it's it's a great relationship, I have big shoes to fill, but we'll we'll still see each other.
If you're still calling him in six months, he might be like, hey, you know what, I got another job. All right, if that's it, there's nothing else?
Jeff, thank you for what you've helped done for the city. Uh it, I'm not sorry to see you go, I'm happy because it's an advancement for you. You're moving up bigger, better things, and I hope you continue to take all that hard work to the next level, don't forget us, we're just down the road. Okay, that's the way I see it, yeah, it's a good thing, it's a good thing for you, okay?
All right, with that being said, zero uh seven sixteen, meeting is plan, meeting of the Pl- Planning Commission is closed.